Good evening and welcome. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. Tonight, as we gather, let us meditate on the following poem by Amanda Gorman. "We lift our gazes not to what stands between us, but what stands before us. We close the divide because we know to put our future first, we must first put our differences aside." Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, will you please present the resolution for consideration?
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of August 7th, 2024, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Council, a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
A motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Williams.
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Do we have any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to approval of the minutes from the May 1st, 2024 regular meeting and May 15th, 2024 work session. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Rector?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval, Councilman Rector, Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson, named discussing the motion. Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have a special presentation this evening referencing the Silver Telly Award recognition for city video production. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The city's communications department has received a Silver Telly Award in recognition for a training video production. Communications Director Jennifer Moore will provide the background on the received award. Jennifer?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. In February 2024, the City of Suffolk's Communications Department produced a fire training video at the request of Suffolk Fire and Rescue Department's multimedia analysts, Danny Epperson and Valerie Baker, along with Assistant Communications Director Andy Franklin, worked closely with Suffolk Fire Captain Tommy Thomason to film a May Day scenario at the old Driver Elementary Building. This training scenario depicted a mock fire scene with a partial roof collapse trapping two firefighters. Our crew set up multiple cameras and worked alongside the fire crew and officials and firefighters to capture these critical moments, producing a 10-minute training video. This video has since been used by Suffolk Fire and Rescue and has also been published nationally in the Fire Engineering Magazine, which has been used as a video resource nationwide. Having received great feedback from Suffolk Fire Chief Mike Baraki and Captain Thomason, our communications department submitted the training video for a Telly Award. The Telly Award recognizes excellence in video and television across all screens globally. And for 45 years, the Tellies have honored outstanding work in promotion, TV shows, online videos, and social media, and is judged by more than 200 industry experts. Awards are given in gold, silver, and bronze levels. Winning a Telly on any level is a prestigious mark of quality and creativity for any media professional. Our team submitted Managing the May Day under non-broadcast media in the category of education and training. On May 21st, winners were announced, and our team proudly received a Silver Telly in their category. We'd like to show you right now a few short clips of the 10-minute video, the whole of which can be watched on the city's Suffolk YouTube channel.
The City of Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue has dedicated the month of February to May Day training. Over the past three years, we've been able to obtain an old elementary school and turn it into many different occupancies for training props. This year's prop, an apartment complex under construction, was a secured corridor with four apartments occupied. While our focus is May Day, we've also taken the opportunity to address engine and truck placement, hose line deployments, tactical decision-making, firefighter and civilian rescue, expand the incident command system, and maintain the situational awareness. We wanted to replicate when one of our sister cities a year ago were faced with a floor collapse trapping four firefighters while conducting suppression activities in civilian rescues. We're running our department through 12 drills in six days and afterwards conducting hot washes and sharing lessons learned. Welcome to Managing the May Day, the City of Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue.
I stand here today with Fire Chief Michael Baraki and Fire Captain Tommy Thomason to formally recognize our award-winning production team, Danny Epperson and Valerie Baker. Will you please come forward to accept the certificate and this award? And this is the actual statuette for a Telly. And awards like this are not only earned and admired from our industry professionals, but also highlighted, it highlights the caliber of the professionalism of our communications team as they deliver each and every day for the city, for its departments, and the citizens of Suffolk. So again, congratulations. Thank you.
At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would always be necessary if any member of the city council wished to devote on specific items separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. And a motion would be ordered. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Rector?
Move to approve as of now.
Got a motion for approval? Councilman Fawcett?
I'll second his motion, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, are there any agenda speakers at this time? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
There are no speakers at this time.
Hearing none, please present the consent agenda items for consideration.
Item number seven, in ordinance to accept and appropriate additional funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation Urban Maintenance Program for public roadway maintenance. Item number eight, in ordinance to accept and appropriate fiscal year 2024, 2025, Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program funding from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And item number nine, a resolution to accept a donation of personal property for the Suffolk Fire, excuse me, the Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue.
Mr. Manager, will you please provide an overview of the items?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. In regards to item seven, the city has received additional funding in an amount of $926,406.05 from the Virginia Department of Transportation's Urban Maintenance Program. The additional funds are resolved in the changes to the state urban maintenance funding formula and adjustments in lane mileage funds during the past year. The funding will be used to enhance maintenance throughout the city. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the FY24-25 Road Maintenance Fund budget by the $926,406.05. There is no local match. In regards to item eight, the city has received $900,172.63 in funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Funds consist of $519,451 in CDBG funds and $380,721, excuse me, $721.63 in Home Investment Partnership Program funds. The funds will be used for activities that provide services to low to moderate income families. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the Consolidated Grants Fund by the $900,172.63. There is a required 25% local match for home grant, which will be achieved through in-kind contributions provided by the home grant recipients. Regards to item nine, the city has received a donation of personal property of a 2024 Ford Expedition Vehicle with equipment from the Western Tidewater Community Services Board valued at $75,479.29. The vehicle will be used to support the city's Marcus program and to assist the Department of Fire and Rescue in response to behavioral health incidents. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the fleet expenditures in the Department of Fire and Rescue by approximately $2,000 annually for fuel and maintenance costs, which will be reimbursed by the Western Tidewater Community Service Boards. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. If there are any items that members of the city council wish to remove from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. If not, then a motion would be appropriate at this time to adopt the entire agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve as presented, Mayor.
Motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Bennett?
Second.
Second from Councilman Bennett. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no public hearings this evening, nor ordinances, nor resolutions. We do have a staff report concerning live entertainment and nightclubs. Mr. Manager, please prevent an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development would provide the overview. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As you recall, or may recall, from time to time, we bring forward conditional use permits for your consideration as it relates to live entertainment. Specifically, those are nightclub uses that are requesting a conditional use permit to have live entertainment as a part of their operation. We've contemplated some potential changes to our regulations as it relates to bars and nightclubs and specifically live entertainment and how to differentiate it for more impactful uses. So the issue at hand, one being our current bar nightclub use classification and definition. The bar nightclub classification is interesting because bars in Virginia are not permitted. They're not legal. So it's interesting that it would find itself to our use table. But we do define nightclubs as a bar, restaurant, or similar establishment where a dance floor or live entertainment is provided. So while we identify what a nightclub is, we have never defined what live entertainment is. So anyone who is pursuing a live entertainment use in the City of Suffolk will come through requesting a conditional use permit to operate as a nightclub. And that doesn't necessarily align with their business operation or what they'd like to do. So what we'd like to do with this amendment would be to define live entertainment and allow it without a conditional use permit in certain circumstances. And that's what I'm going to kind of outline for you this evening. So nightclubs right now are permitted with a CUP in some zoning districts that may not be appropriate, and we've taken a look at that as well. Those include a lot of residential zoning districts, some lower intensity business districts as well, the VC, O&amp;I as an example. So we've taken a look at those as potentially eliminating that use there as well. So let's see. All right. So I kind of touched on these, but the primary objective with this is to recognize the difference between uses. We see live entertainment accompany restaurants primarily. On occasion, we'll see them with breweries, but primarily restaurants would like to have live entertainment during certain hours. And that live entertainment offering is clearly subordinate to their primary operation, which is a restaurant. So we believe there is an avenue to allow that without the need potentially for a conditional use permit. We wanted to define live entertainment in an effort to differentiate it between when it's a primary use versus when it's utilized as the primary use within entertainment venues, and that would be attached to hours as well. And then we would allow for live entertainment to be provided indoors without the need for a conditional use permit within certain hours as an accessory. Lastly, we would exempt public agencies from the need to obtain a CUP for any live entertainment. So another really important component to this is there are certain times that a conditional use permit would absolutely be appropriate to require for a live entertainment use. And we've identified some hours of operation in which that conditional use permit would be necessary between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. That aligns with our noise regulations as identified in city code, and we believe there's a real general interest to protect the public health and general welfare to negate any potential negative impacts associated with that live entertainment. So I kind of outlined these changes broadly, but they would include a new definition for live entertainment in Appendix A of the Definition Section of the UDO. We would remove the definition of nightclub and the bars and nightclub use classification in our use table, and we would amend the permitted use table to allow for live entertainment. And we'd also specify that live entertainment after 10:00 p.m. would still require a conditional use permit. So here is what that would look like, or here's what it looks like currently in the UDO. Nightclub, bars and nightclubs are permitted in the RU24, MUC40 zoning districts, B1, B2, VC, the Central Business District, it's downtown, O&amp;I, and then the Fairgrounds Redevelopment District as well, all with a CUP. So if you want to have live music anywhere in the City of Suffolk and you're not a bona fide theater, you would require a conditional use permit. And that's kind of the heart of this change, is understanding that some music doesn't necessarily arise to the need for a conditional use permit. So we would, like I said, delete the definition of our nightclub from the use table, and then we would define live entertainment. And this is the proposed definition for live entertainment, but any entertainment indoor or outdoor involving performances or delivery of entertainment by one or more persons, live entertainment includes but is not limited to musical ensembles, solo performers, including MCs or hosts such as trivia or bingo, DJs, karaoke, comics, comedians, and theatrical acts when performed in a venue other than a theater. Operation of any live entertainment component outdoors requires a conditional use permit, and activities held by a public agency are exempt from these provisions. And that's an important point, too, is it doesn't really just come down to music with these live entertainment operations. A lot of restaurants now or other like uses will have hosts, host trivia, or karaoke, or bingo, and we found it not to be impactful to adjacent property owners or business owners. Thus, identified the need for a CUP in those situations being a little excessive. So we would make some modifications to our use table, as I noted. We've already talked about the removal of bars and nightclub in the use table, but we would add live entertainment after 10:00 p.m. as a use within the use table. And in associated zoning districts, I'll outline those in a moment, they would require a CUP. We would allow indoor live entertainment as an accessory use to a permitted principal use in any district as a matter of right without a CUP. So this would be across the city regardless of use district. And we would allow live entertainment after 10:00 p.m. or any outdoor live entertainment with a CUP in the B1, B2, VC, CBD, the Office Institutional, and the Fairgrounds District, but not the RU24 or MUC40. So here's what that would look like, should we pursue that change. You can see we did remove the RU24 and the MUC40s being zoning districts in which you could get a CUP for live entertainment. But anywhere else in the city, you'd be able to do this before 10:00 p.m. indoors without the need for a conditional use permit. So to summarize our thoughts on this, as we took a deep dive into this issue, we would allow live entertainment by right until 10:00 p.m. anywhere in the city. We would continue to require a conditional use permit for indoor live entertainment after 10:00 p.m., including all outdoor live entertainment. This would result in the removal of our nightclub definition, and we would replace that with a definition for live entertainment, clearly outlining what it is, and we would exempt public agencies from the conditional use permit requirement. So the next steps, we did present this as a concept to the Planning Commission Committee and Ordinances at their meeting on July 16th. They forwarded that on to the Planning Commission that put it on their agenda and scheduled it for public hearing at their meeting later this month on August 20th. Should they act on that and move it forward with their recommendation to you all, that would tentatively come before you on September 18th. So that concludes my presentation on this potential ordinance tax amendment. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Council, questions or comments? Councilman Fawcett?
Kevin, thanks for the presentation. This is probably right on time. You know, we've got a few places like AJ Gators, for instance, that had a situation come up where on certain nights they do musical trivia, and other nights they do another trivia. And they ran into a little bit of a problem because it fell under the nightclub situation. So this is going to, you know, help that kind of be removed and give them the opportunity. Other than if they go after 10 o'clock, it changes the game, but for the most part, I think this is going to be helpful to a lot of these establishments that like to do inside entertainment of that type. And I look forward to seeing this come forward to see if this gets passed without any issues or not. Thank you.
Councilman Bennett?
Yeah, Kevin, just one question. On the outdoor entertainment, they don't have a time after to end. Is there a certain ending time of one, or two, or three, or?
No, that is not something we aim to solve during this process. Right now, with a conditional use permit issued by city council, we can specify those hours of operation within the conditions. And that has by and large been until midnight on weekend nights, so Friday and Saturday. But no, we do not aim to identify anything. That discretion would still be available to staff to recommend conditions on a case-by-case basis.
Very good, because I didn't want people to think it could go on forever and not have an ending time. Thank you.
Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, thank you very much for this presentation. It's, I want to echo what Councilman Fawcett said. Some of these changes are very much needed. You know, because like he said, there are a lot of establishments that just want to incorporate something very simple into their program to liven it up a little bit, and then it turns out they got to go through and get a conditional use permit because now all of a sudden they're considered a nightclub. But with these, I know that like with the nightclub stuff, there was a lot of required things that you had to have, like security 24 hours or, you know, during the, somebody available to get you the tapes. Does that get lost in this, or will those requirements still be required, like if you need a conditional use permit to do your live music?
So certainly. Those are conditions that we would continue to recommend with any conditional use permit. And really, it's 10 o'clock being that cutoff. So you can do live entertainment before that with no need for a CUP, but those operations that legitimately still want to operate like a nightclub would like to go later than that. So they would need a CUP, and thus we would establish those conditions at that time.
Thank you for that clarification.
Council, any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Wine, thank you very much for your presentation. I have been a proponent for this type of change for quite some time and I'm glad to see that it's coming. Always had an issue with the bar and nightclub classification because I was trying to imagine where we have a bar in Suffolk without an eatery, which is actually not even a possibility. But the definition, being able to define exactly what entertainment is and individuals that are willing to invest in our city, especially restaurants and other eateries, will know that if they want to have that type of entertainment, be it a piano or acoustic guitar or whatever it is that they would like to have, that there's not a separate process to go through. So when they're putting together their business model, they will know that that will be allowed up until 10:00 PM. And I think we also need to not lose sight of the fact that everything will still have to adhere to the noise ordinances that are currently on the book. And if I'm not mistaken, it's even if you're inside, it's not supposed to be heard more than 50 feet, I think, outside of the establishment. So I think this is a very, very welcome and appropriate change, especially as it relates to revitalization of downtown. I think that's going to be a huge attraction also. So thank you. I'm looking forward to the final product.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have one motion to consider this evening, which is a motion to schedule a city council work session on August 21st, 2024 at 4:00 PM unless canceled by the mayor and city manager. Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval, Councilman Williams. Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second for Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
We do have non-agenda speakers registered this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "non-agenda speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, to engage in personal attacks, to promote private business ventures or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Jeff Hancock, 3889 Whaleyville Boulevard, representing the Suffolk Master Gardeners Association regarding the Suffolk Master Gardeners Association's needs. Is Mr. Hancock present? Sue Copeland, 4395 Lake Prince Road, representing self regarding safety concerns in her area. Next speaker is Valeria Rose, 168 Preserve Way, representing self regarding development at the Preserve at Lake Mead.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Valeria Rose. I reside at 168 Preserve Way within the Preserve at Lake Mead. My husband and I appeared before this body on May 15th and then again on July 17th to voice our concerns about the substandard initial development within the Preserve at Lake Mead and lack of adherence to approved engineering plans. Before presenting my current concerns, I'd like to thank Councilman Fawcett and Councilman Williams, who took time to tour our neighborhood since the last time we were here, despite the fact that we do not live within their burrows. So thank you both gentlemen. They were able to make their own assessment about the state of our community and both of them noted their own concerns about what the Preserve at Lake Mead looks like. When I came here on May 15th, I stated that it appeared as if the city's development efforts exceeded its capacity to ensure that projects are completed in accordance with approved plans and in compliance with its own ordinances. I still have those concerns. The city plays a unique and critical role as the arbitrator of sorts between entities with competing interests. For example, Worth Development, the developer of the Preserve at Lake Mead, is a business whose interest and goal is to maximize profits. Some businesses commit to providing superior products and services as a component part of maximizing profits. Others, not so much. Worth Development falls in the latter category. Residents, on the other hand, within the cities, we seek to maximize our quality of life given our own constraints. My husband and I moved here from Norfolk to move out of the city and have easier access to two-lane motorcycle riding. That's part of what brought us here. Sometimes the interests of businesses and residents clash. This is where the city comes into play. The city sets parameters to ensure that everyone, both businesses and residents, operate within appropriate bounds. The city ensures that residents don't infringe on others' rights. Simultaneously, the city ensures that businesses, like Worth Development, adheres to things like engineering plans they submit, which in essence is a contract between the developer and the city. While I have some means and avenues to hold Worth Development accountable for providing things outlined within approved engineering plans, I lack the levers of government that you have at your disposal to make things happen. For 15 years, I was a high school mathematics teacher and one of the courses that I taught was advanced placement calculus. So to put this in the terms of a calculus and a mathematics problem, this is an optimization problem. You have two functions, Worth Development and residents within the Preserve at Lake Mead. We both seek to maximize our respective functions. You, city council, the city of Suffolk, you are the constraints. You set the boundaries to ensure that everyone gets the best things possible within some appropriate bounds. We, again, 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 are seeking your assistance in making sure, you make sure that we follow our bounds and our constraints. We hope that you will similarly help ensure that Worth Development is held accountable within their bounds. Ironically, today we received a letter from an email from the Property Management Associates outlining various progress and improvements that have been made within the last couple of months. At the bottom of that email, it says, you know, unfortunately, you know, with rising costs, we may have to increase your homeowners association fees, as they simultaneously talked about regrading the path in phases one through three. We're in phase four or five now. We're still looking for amenities in phases one through, one through three. Those things were not done according to the engineering plans. So there's no way we should be assessed additional monies to pay for what we've already paid for. We paid for these in buying our homes and according to the engineering plans, a path is supposed to be a part of that. Six feet, two feet clearance on either side, geotech membrane, X, Y, Z. So this isn't regrading. This is doing initial development. Yes, I can go to my property management associates, but they're in essence owned by the developer. We do not have a true voice outside of you and we seek your assistance, your help in getting things done. Today, we brought out some folks from our community who are equally concerned. Some will speak, not all, but if I could have residents from the Preserve at Lake Mead stand up, and these are homeowners, within our, within our community. We're here. We're not going away. We're not going away. We are not going away. Thank you very much.
Daniel Blue, 168 Preserve Way, representing self regarding development at the Preserve
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, councilmen, council lady. I'd like to also thank Councilman Fawcett and Councilman Williams for coming out to our community before I do anything because you didn't have to do it and I really do appreciate it. And you got to see for yourself what is so upsetting about us and our concerns. When I first came here, I came here because they weren't maintaining the construction area. They weren't mowing down the weeds, which were six feet tall. Since then, I've learned that they were responsible for doing this since the inception of the project, that they were supposed to be maintaining every seven days, every 10 days, that they didn't seed or do erosion mitigation. They were supposed to do something temporary. They have done none of it. They have not given us our amenities that we paid for. The word that Councilman Fawcett used that is, keeps ringing in my mind is assessment. They said that, he said that we would probably wind up being assessed the cost to complete the development and it would be amateurized over some years. So when I came here the last time, I thought that it might cost us $3,000 a household, but I completely underestimated it. And when I mentioned to Councilman Fawcett, who has experience with homeowners associations in his own community, and I told him that it might cost $2 million to, to, to rectify this, he said, you'll be lucky if it costs $2 million. At $2 million, it will cost each of our homes, each of our households, 167 households, $11,829 each in addition. Now, what would you do if someone told you after you paid for your home that you owed another almost $12,000? That's ridiculous. To any one standard, that doesn't make sense. And as my wife mentioned, we need your help. Not yesterday, today. These people are about to walk away with our money and we don't like it. So mayor, Mr. City Manager, council members, whatever you can do to put the pressure on Worth Development to do what we've paid them to do, what they promised that you, they would do to you. They came here just like I did today, but they sold you an idea and now they're about to walk away without fulfilling their contractual obligations. And we just don't think that it's right. We just don't think that it's the right thing, that you're allowing them to do this. And I look on TV, Mr. Mayor, and you're saying the city's growing problems are not that significant, but to us, they're significant. They are literally in our backyards. The rodents, the whatever, we live with it each day, each day for the last 700 days, wherever I've lived in Suffolk, I've had to look out there at that. And there seems to be no end to it. I'd appreciate any comments, any suggestions. I am not going away. This is not the last place I will go. I will do whatever I have to do until this is resolved, but something has got to happen. And if you cannot mitigate this kind of thing occurring in these developments, then it should be stopped until you can figure out some mitigation of ways to get around this. This is, this is crazy. I mean, this is stressing us out living in this environment. I didn't pay a half million dollars to live like that. I just did not. Thank you very much for your time and I'd look forward to, to, to you giving me some resolution or helping me. I'm not let, any less satisfied with, with what's going on and it seems like nothing is going on. Thank you very much.
Roy Johnson, 1877 White Marsh Road, representing self regarding the speed limit on White Marsh Road?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members. I'm Anthony Johnson from 1877 White Marsh Road. I've been there for the last four years and it's grown a little bit down there, but my problem I'm having concerns two different councilman's areas, Councilman Williams and Councilman Leroy Bennett. My first one is out of my five minutes, is that on 32, you can pick up White Marsh Road and come into the city. We have got a lot of Carolinians coming through there, taking it as an interstate. They come through flying 65 and 70 miles an hour and between 4:00 and 8:30 in the morning, you can't hardly come out the driveway because they're going zoom, 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 zoom. My complaint now is that other neighbors at the end towards 32 side, if I lose anybody, tell me to go back. At the end of, with 32, White Marsh starts on 32, there are about five houses down there and they've got, took time to have signs made and put in their front yard to say, if you lived here, would you want your children to be in danger like you speeding out here? For, they took the time to make a sign, Mayor, to let you know that you're going too fast coming through here. The last two years, we have had four major wrecks on White Marsh Road. One, one was death, one was nightingale, one flipped over in my yard, and the other one came around a little curb and just flip, 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 flip. They are driving entirely too fast on that street and I would like, looking forward to somebody doing something about it. To your, to your borough, Mr. Leroy, when they come off of White Marsh, they turn on to Truman Road, Truman Road to Sixth Street, Sixth Street to Washington Street, Washington Street to 58. They don't want to take that interstate, come up and get on that bypass and take it, but they want to come through a residential area steady speeding. Care nothing about who lives there, who stayed there or nothing, just come through flying. The speed limit is 45, 35, then 25, but they never break the speed when they come past my house. And if you're traveling on that road between 4:00 and 8:30 in the morning, if you're driving 45, they're going to look behind you, got three or four, just bump it to bump it, just blowing a hole for you to get out the way so they can get through. And when they go through East Suffolk Garden, they cut through Truman Road, which is a historic black area to me in Suffolk, they come through and pay it no mind, fly right through it. I spoke to the Civic League president maybe a couple of years ago and I said, man, what are we going to do about this? He said, I've already reported it to my borough president, which is Mr. Bennett. And so far, I've seen nothing have been done. They still flying through every morning and just disrespecting that city completely on that side of town, where they could take 32 onto the bypass and go ahead on the porch, but they're going to come through, take them, save their little five or six miles and then jump up and just, you got to be careful, they running off the road and everything. I would like to see some kind of results from that and it's a matter that concerns health and safety, safety more than anything. If somebody can take time and make a six, a three by six sign to say slow down and put it in their yard, one, two, three, here, three on this side, that's to tell somebody that they're doing a lot of speeding on that road and that they're human to stay in there. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pedro Ramos, 125 Abbey Road, representing self regarding general concerns of residents regarding the Preserve at Lake Mead.
Good evening, Mayor Doeman, Vice Mayor Ward, city council members. My name is Pedro Ramos. I'm on 125 Abbey Road, 23434 at the Preserve, Lake Mead. My wife and I moved to Suffolk from Virginia Beach last September as part of our retirement plan. I transitioned from the Navy, spent 30 years there, started my next job and now we're getting ready to transition again. So we picked Suffolk as a place to go. I like the outdoors, it's a very nice neighborhood that we resided in right now and a few, few doors down, my grandkids live there, so I get to see them grow up. So that's an extra benefit. We also moved to Suffolk and in specific development for the amenities that they were offering. Listed on their website, they list, and this is Ryan Homes and Chesapeake Homes, athletic fields, a gazebo, community dock, water access, white sidewalks, bike trails, pickleball court, bocce ball court, and a life-size chess and playground. And those, those, those different activities are surround the roundabout in the center of the community. those, those different activities are, surround the roundabout in the center of the community. But I'm here tonight, again, as Mr. Lee Rose and Mr. Blue commented, are the ongoing issues that we're contending with in our neighborhood. And I like, I like to give you some granularity on, on some of these items. They're ongoing, we've attempted to contact the developer, we've met with some of you, and I'll get to that here in a minute, and, and also contacted our property management. Landscaping, maintenance grass, be item one, cutting, still ongoing, it's been addressed, they've been out a few times. There's open space, and active open space, that there are two different areas that have two different lengths of grass, but the active open spaces are more concerned right now because they haven't been regraded, and they haven't been properly turfed as outlined in their development plan. Some of the passive spaces still remain at four to six feet tall of broom grass and weeds, where they've actually planted trees in those areas, you can't even see the trees anymore. Those areas have grown up to the property lines of the folks that live there, some of them own pools, so you know as well as I do, snakes, frogs, you know, rodents and things of that nature usually end up in their pools, so they're scooping, I mean, scooping those, those animals out daily. So the active and open spaces from phases one through three, again, have, have not really been attended to and haven't been developed and, and completed and usable as they should have completed them before they went on to phase four. Walking trails, per, per the development plan, six foot wide, one foot on each side of that six-foot wide walking trail, six inches of, of different types of rock with the geofabric in there. Again, phases one through three, they dropped the cinder and that was it. You can't walk down the pass, they're hazardous, probably breaking ankle, they're overgrown, they keep dropping weed killer on them, but nothing lasts so long as, maybe a couple of weeks, and the weeds, and the weeds are back again with all the rain that we're having. The installed gazebos and barbecue areas, they're totally overgrown. Really nice facilities that they've provided out there that, that the community can utilize, but can't use them. Can't walk to them, you can't get to them, even if you got to them, the grass is overgrown, you can't even sit down on the bench out there or, and enjoy a barbecue. There's a curb and gutter that happens to be between my home at 125 and my neighbor, as you're looking at the homes to my right, that's been broken, it's, it's cracked, and it's starting to sink. It's next to an actual drain that's been like that before my home was even constructed. At one point, the property manager came after me to fix it, and I had to prove through Chesapeake Homes that that was broken even before I even purchased the home. So that got resolved, but the broken curb and gutter is still there. The streetlights on Abbey, I think we found some progress. This week, they were out marking the gas lines and, and the power for those lights, so hopefully we should see some lamps, street lamps go up here soon. The mailbox area, which they constructed, constantly floods when it rains. The pitch of, of the slab that they poured looks like it's, am I out of time? I think so, okay. So, so closing comments, a bunch of issues. Mr. Kevin Y and Ms. Pedinger came out, Mr. Williams and, and Mr. Johnson all came out, so I'd like to thank those folks. I think we made some progress getting y'all involved, and then, again, I'd like to thank everyone who's, who's participated in this from, from our community, and again, we're gonna keep coming back and hopefully get some help from y'all and some direction and guidance so we can resolve these issues. Thank you.
Arthur Elliott, 1015 Nansman Parkway, Unit 201B, representing Self regarding city affairs and land use. Arthur Elliott. Deanna Ramos, 125 Abbey Road, representing Self regarding the Preserve at Lake Mead.
I'm gonna be very short with this. As my community have been spoken and presented to you guys all the issues that we have, but I'm gonna present it in a very different way so you understand where we're coming from. When we look at the Preserve, Mead, I look at the Worth Development as my fiancee. And the community, there we look at it, it was our wedding time day, and that, the company and the developer that we brought our house, it was our wedding planner. And when we saw all the beautiful amenities presented to us, that was our future, right there. And I look at it every time I pass and look at that house, I said, "I will be there," because it was a faith for us to be there. If you believe in something, especially if it's bigger than us, it's because it's meant to be. And I really believe that, that we were meant to be, to be there. When we signed our contract, that was our marriage day. And I got married with our community in our neighborhood, in our home, our home, our home. And the moment that we signed that contract, all that promises they were giving to us, they were broken. And I'm looking at you guys as our marriage therapist. Please help us, because I enjoy my home, I love my home, I love the fact that I have my grandchildren four doors away from me. I love my neighbors, I love that we had a beautiful community, but please help us, because this is absurd, that we have to be here to find something that was promised to us, and it's done, if something needs to be done, please help us. That's what I need to say. Thank you, have a good night.
Our next speaker is Selena Thornton Manuel, 1921 Piedmont Road, representing Parkside at Bennett's Creek Homeowners Association regarding concerns with glow fiber installation.
Just checking to see if y'all are still awake. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Selena Thornton Manuel with Parkside at Bennett's Creek HOA. I hope you've taken the time to read the email that I sent to each and every one of you today, and taken into consideration of our pain at Parkside at Bennett's Creek concerning the glow fiber installation. Mayor, I, I really appreciate the initiative that you've taken to bring another service to the city, which is much needed in our community. But since Thursday, last Thursday, we've had to run out of our house in our bathrobe and slippers to fight with the developers and the contractors. All right? Yep. It's been a total mess out there with glow fiber. Let me tell you what we've had to incur out there. Broken water line, broken sprinkler heads, cracked sidewalk, torn up lawns, and they also cut my internet line, phone line while I was in the middle of working. Yeah, I wasn't too happy with that. That's why I'm here today. City Manager, this is your project with glow fiber. All right? I shouldn't have to chase down Glow Fiber, SKT Corporation, AM Communications, Spectrum, and also TIC Dynamics. All these people were in the area along with Public Works to get answers of why we are having so many issues with the installation of the glow fiber broadband service. So, I'm asking, I'm asking that you oversee this project to make sure that our neighborhood is given proper and timely notification with contact information, not 24 hours, we need at least 72 hours of proper notification. We need to ensure that utilities are properly marked off before they start digging, so you wouldn't have issues of broken water lines and cut internet lines. Also, we would, we would like to see proper signage of who's working. Road closures and sidewalk closures, we have a lot of people that walk. If they have lines and dirt and everything on the sidewalk, that's a tripping hazard. All right? And we would like proper and professional work, workmanship out there. If they tear up, tear up the yard, put it back, put the dirt back in the hole. All right? Don't leave trash, don't leave your tarps. All right? So between Thursday, and what's the day, Wednesday, it's been a disaster, and we would like some action. Also in my email, I have invited each and every one of you to my homeowners association, association meeting on next Tuesday, August 13th, at 6:30. The address is 3001 Parkside Circle. I also invited the contractors also to address the homeowners out there. Like I said, we, we appreciate another added service, but we need, we need some help to make sure that this project is done professionally and in a timely manner. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teresa Sims, 838 Colonel Mead Drive, representing the Suffolk Sister Cities Commission regarding the Oderzo visit.
Hello, my name is Teresa Sims, and I served as the chairperson for the Sister Cities Committee supporting the recent Italian delegation visit. On behalf of Sister Cities International, I'd like to extend a sincere thank you to the mayor, to the vice mayor, to the city manager, deputy city manager, Gary Jones, Director of Couple Programs, Teresa Earls, Tourism Development, Councilman John Rector, the entire city council, along with the city staff, for your support and involvement with the 30th anniversary celebration of our sister city connection with the city of Oderzo, Italy. We also want to mention our city merchants, our citizens, and members of our community that contributed to making this visit a success. The mosaic artist, Professor Ezio Boragana, was honored to be a part of the celebration and visit, and to learn more of the history of our city, the obecy legacy, and to see his art on display for all to enjoy in Foundation Park. Sister Cities is grateful for the many hours spent planning and executing the events for our visiting delegates and families. We hosted 31 Italian delegates from July 25th to 29th. Before they came, I asked them what they would like to do or see. They said they wanted to see a Navy ship, and they wanted to learn more about peanuts and obecy, because they really didn't know anything about peanuts, like even some Americans, they think, they thought they grew on trees, so we had to dispel that right away. So we started with a visit to the Wisconsin in downtown Norfolk, followed by the Gerald R. Ford Aircraft Carrier. And that evening, we ended with a welcome reception at the Obecy House, and we were welcomed, each and every one of us, by Amadeo Obecy himself, played by Danny Epperson. The next day, we went to the Marx Family Peanut Farm. We got to see how peanuts were grown and harvested, and got to see some cotton, and just learned the whole process of what it takes to grow peanuts, what it takes to get from the ground to the, to the table. We then went to Belmont Peanuts for a tour of their processing facility, and then had lunch at their deli. They were very gracious to have 47 people come all at one time to their place of business, but they handled it like they had, like they did it every single day. The next day, we started with, well, I should say later on that day, we went by Obecy Hospital to learn more about Obecy's contributions to Suffolk. Then we had a reception hosted by the hospital president, Danny, David Masterson, and his staff. That evening, we topped off with a dinner at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts to honor Professor Boragana, and we were, we actually presented a painting of the fountain by artist Sandy Waters to the city of Oderzo. Saturday morning started with a breakfast with the mayor, city council members, and city staff, and it was a great opportunity for our visitors to have some quality time, just speaking and getting to know the members of our, our city government. Saturday after breakfast, we went over to Foundation Park and had a rededication of the fountain, and the artist, Professor Boragana, got to speak about what, why he designed the fountain the way he did. He said it represented, the amphora represents hope and brotherhood. Saturday evening, they got to spend some quality time with their families. Some of them went racing go-karts down in Virginia Beach, some went boating on the river, others just had family time at home. But also Saturday afternoon, I should say, we, we were hosted by Brian and Christie McCormley at the Truitt House, and the Italians were very impressed. They, that was one of the first houses that they saw, that was one of our oldest houses in the city. And then Sunday, we had more time with our families, and Sunday evening, we topped off the day with a farewell pool party at Cedar Point Country Club. Through each, well, through each delegation visit, we strive to accomplish the mission of Sister Cities International. This mission is to promote international peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation, one individual, one community at a time. The vision and mission created and executed by President Dwight Eisenhower for all nations in the 1960s has grown to touch global citizens in over 150 countries over six continents. Suffolk, Virginia has embraced this international mission, and the city continues to receive the value of the experience and the joy of sharing our culture and history with others. Again, I want to thank you to the city leadership and to all involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrea Perodi. Perodi, excuse me, Perodi, thank you. 2655 Riverwatch Drive, representing Self regarding the structure of the comp review.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the committee here, the council. I'm kind of excited about talking to you tonight in regard to actually something I think that's very cool. Most of my former students would be rolling their eyes knowing what's coming, about data quality. I was looking to understand better, again, my relatively new home here in Suffolk, and have gone through the different comp plans that have been issued through the 2020s, the 35, and the 45. And it struck me that some of the assumptions we've made, some of the plans that we've put together, although well-meaning and probably well-done, don't necessarily fit in a way that might be in the best interest of what you're all trying to achieve, and that is a better environment, happy citizens, and a cost-effective process. One of the things that I noted, my background is in modeling and simulation. I was delighted when I was here, listening to the presentation on our city's budget, and it's nice to see we're doing well. However, I would say, I was very pleased when I heard the members of the Budget Committee particularly talk about their simulation for budget projections, and how they were using modeling and simulation for that. The process that we're going through right now for 2045 is the exact process that should be embedded within modeling and simulation. be embedded within modeling and simulation. Because we talk so much about, for example, the parking, we talk about traffic, we talk about a lot of things. But without having a tight kind of projection of what is right now, in other words, factual, verifiable data of what presently exists, how can we really make the projections from where we currently are today in our reality versus what this 45 document is saying? The 45 document has very good points in it, however, we are not where that document says we are to begin. The clarity of it is questionable, the validity of a lot of the data is bad. There are things in there that I was very concerned with. So being a good researcher, I talked to some of the people from the company that actually did some of the development of the tool. And I said, okay, I'm a researcher for a long time, I'm going to bug you a little bit. And she was delightful lady. And we had a wonderful conversation. I said, how many times did you visit the properties and the regions and the places that you project of what can be done, how much room we've got, and what are some of the facets where members of the community say, why did we move here? We're all saying the same thing. We didn't want to live in Virginia Beach, we didn't want to live where, we're all tucked in to one another, we didn't want a city. Hell, I was in the Bronx for a long time, you know I wanted to get out of there. So I came here. So when they talk about it's quaint, it's very hard to take these subjective variables that have been incredibly important to the people that sit here, because they all say in other words or synonyms, there is an ambiance here that was very special, and we're trying to hang on to it. And it's the push and shove of project, of public and private development that seems to be in the face of what we're trying to accomplish. What I'm saying to you is we should be starting with a cleaner start point, so we have clear data, and then say in the data, for example, the 2020, or the 2020 first comp plan, that is a very clean document and less complicated. But we never had in the following 35, any reference to the results of any actions that were suggested in 2020. What happened? Did they work? How do you know success if you don't tell me what it looks like? So we're back at, in the 20, you know, the 2020, you know, literature, and we really don't have a clear view of if anything we did made sense, or what of it is salvageable and what of it needs to be tweaked or gotten rid of. In terms of the spending, you keep spending on new plans and new ideas, and well, that's fine. But if you don't know what success looks like, you're just going to keep throwing money out the door, and no one's going to be happy. And so what I'm trying to do is say, we should be looking at the process of modeling and simulation, and the only time that's valid is if it's done with a short lag time from analysis or inspection of the properties. You've got to look at what you're analyzing. It's like going to the doctor and saying, that hurts, and he doesn't look at that. So you're not going to get a really good return on analysis. So we need to get back into 2020 and say, what were the parameters that you already have initiated? Good work has already been done, take credit for it. How was it deemed successful? If we don't have metrics, we need to identify operationally sound metrics. And then we can have a period of one lag period, which here might be 10 years, but we should probably have a median point to say, where are we going trend-wise toward our goal? Because if we now have an endpoint of success, are we getting there, or do we need to stop? Or do we need to say, we need more of this because it's working so well? So by the time you get to a current document, you can have the confidence in knowing it gives a clear representation of reality today for the people who live and work here. It gives you the tools better able to manage and really articulate what it is you're trying to do in a measurable fashion with good hard data for the projection of your fiscal concerns, as well as other projects and concerns that you do have. I really am strongly against, you know, spinning our wheels with wordsmithing of the 45 document. There are elements in there that might be salvageable, but I'm telling you, it's going to, it's a lag so far out that it's unrealistic. And we really need to get a grip on not only our data, of how we identify even the subjective things like what is charming, what is quaint. There are tools in schools of architecture, again, with consulting with scholars from different universities, and I do mean that, where they're not attached to or have conflict of interest with the city. We need them to say, there are tools where people are asked, what is it that makes you like a community? Some of the folks here tonight already described, it's either familial closeness or a certain amount of space between homes, it could be a number of things. But we don't have anything clearly defined, so I'm, all I'm doing is asking very much of saying, help out our resource fellows or our budget men that were here that night, and they did an excellent presentation on the budget, but their commentary had to do with their modeling and simulation needing better data. And they're right. But you know what? You don't model and sim just your money. You put the whole package together, then you have an integrated community of needs and solutions and ongoing projects. Right now, if you only do it for the fiscal, what it looks like in the paperwork is the only thing you care about is the money. And if it is that way, frankly, I'm sorry. But it's probably not. I really believe that you care, but we're just not getting there. And so please consider, again, a different approach to the scholarship of analysis as well as what we do. And I know I took up time, and I'm also going to tell you real quick, we're real excited, we're standing up a civic league in the Hillpoint Godwin Road area, and we were going to start last night at the Knights Out, but Knights Out got wet, so we didn't get going real well. So just to let you know, that's a good thing that people are getting more interested in their home community and our rules. Okay? Thank you.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. We've got quite a few folks here from Preserve at Lakeview. Mr. Manager, I'm going to go a little off-script here, but if you would just possibly take a moment and bring us up to date as to the current status of what's transpired at the Preserve and also what we foresee in the future.
Okay, I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Kevin Hughes to go to the podium, he's been working closely with staff.
So following the last July city council meeting, our Director of Planning, our Assistant Director of Planning toured the site with the engineering plan. Following that, they noted all the deficiencies in the open space area. They noted and scheduled a meeting with the development team, walked them through it, the various deficiencies. So some of the things that were mentioned earlier about the active space and how it was constructed and how it's being maintained, in addition to the walking trails and a few other items. I've also had a conversation with the development team there as well. They've brought to us that they want to correct those deficiencies and work towards that. I'll note that that open space that's been talked about a lot here has not been accepted, and so it is still in that active state, and we've asked them to escalate the corrective action in there per the engineering plan. They have put in some parameters, they have a team ready to do it. The weather unfortunately has been a challenge in order to redo the trails, I think that's kind of one of their first items to prioritize in addition to some of the other space. And so we've received a number of updates since that time about when they're going to go out there, and unfortunately, some of the weather delays that have impacted them thus far. I think there's been approximately five or so dry days since our last meeting. Part of that, we shared that we thought it was very important for them to speak to the residents. I think they've chosen to do that through the property management, I think you heard that as well today. And so we've really been pushing them, they've ensured us that they do want to correct those actions, and we'll continue to communicate with them to see those processes improved. We have shared with them some of our concerns, that if it's not corrected, what that could potentially have in other phases on the development, and how that could really cause problems with them moving forward.
I'd like to go one step further, if I may. I know there is a process to try to resolve these type of issues, sometimes it's civil, sometimes it requires civil action. I know concern in HOAs and developers' responsibilities, there are certain actions that we can take. So in regards to that process, exactly what options do we have, will we have, and are we being diligent in doing so as far as enforcement is concerned?
Well, at this stage, based upon our last conversation, we believe we've set a bar and let them know that these things need to be corrected. I think they've assured us, and we've talked to their contractor, that they can begin making progress related to that. If those things don't occur, then we can begin to revisit things like their bond or other items for us to review.
And if I could go just one step further and just ask the city attorney if he could weigh in as to what our options may be?
I haven't seen all of the documents that the city holds, so I cannot answer specific questions about what remedies exist for the city. Generally, for public improvements, we obtain a bond from the contractor. If the contractor breaches what was supposed to be done, then we can call them the bond. But as to this specific issue, I would need more information before I can answer your question.
Okay, thank you. And I do know there's a process and time constraints and notices, and having been involved in some of this, it gets rather frustrating, because we are limited to some extent as to what type of enforcement we can take, because there are protections out there also that protect the citizens from any adverse action by the city without their due process also. So I just want to be, just keep, I know this council is concerned, I know this council wants to stay informed, and this council is, wants to know, you know, have the updates, and we want to be assured that we are doing everything we possibly can to have the contractor fulfill their obligations that they made to these individuals when they spent their hard-earned money looking for a particular product. And being in business, I know that it is, when you spend your dollars, you expect to have the product that you bargained for. So you can rest assured that myself and this council is behind you. You may not be satisfied with the process or the amount of time, and I know you're not going away, but I want to let you know, we're not going away either. We'll be right here. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Hughes. At this time, I'll ask if Media and Community Relations Director Jennifer Moore has any announcements.
Excuse me, Mayor, we do have one item of new business this evening.
What? Why, I miss new business, you're exactly right. Skip it again. New business, please, Madam Clerk.
There has been one individual submitted for consideration for the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, and that is Social Services Director Harry Cromer.
Okay, council motion would be in order. Councilman Bennett?
So, who?
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Bennett, Councilman Williams?
Second, ma'am.
Second from Councilman Williams, is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
At this time, is there any new business that would require action by city council? Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We all got a legislative update from Mr. Hutchins' office, and he was very good about going through and explaining that some of the items, we're going to have to make some adjustments to the UDO based on changes to the state ordinances, and then there were other bills that got passed by the legislature that we could potentially act on. I sat down and had a meeting with him, and we went through about six, seven, or eight of them, and I've identified one of them that I would like to make a motion to request the Planning Commission through their Committee on Ordinances to review House Bill 1415, Civil Penalties for Demolition of Historic Structures, and recommend potential updates to the Unified Development Ordinance or city policy that may be warranted, and to bring those updates to this council for consideration.
Thank you, Councilman Rector has a motion on the floor. Councilman Fawcett?
I'll move to second his motion, Mayor.
You'll get a second from Councilman Fawcett, is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Before moving to announcements and comments, do we have anyone else on council to bring anything forward under new business? Hearing none, we'll now move to announcements and comments, and ask if Media and Community Relations Director Jennifer Moore has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I'll kick off the announcement tonight with exciting news from Suffolk Police Department. Police Chief Danny Bowie announces that Jesse Epperson has been selected for promotion as deputy chief, effective today, Wednesday, August 7th. Major Epperson is a lifelong resident of the city of Suffolk. He joined the Suffolk Police Department in 2006. Major Epperson holds a master's degree in public administration from Troy University and a bachelor's in criminal justice from Old Dominion University. Congratulations, Major Epperson. The Finance Department has announced that the city of Suffolk has been awarded two awards by the Government Finance Officers Association. The first award is the Distinguished Budget Presentation, in which the city has consecutively won for 16 years. This award reflects the commitment to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting and is only, and is the only national award program in governmental budgeting. The second award is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which the city has won for 39 years in a row, and is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. Congratulations to the finance team. The Virginia Department of Transportation has announced that construction activities are kicking off this month on the southeastern Public Service Authority Interchange Improvement Project along Route 58 by the landfill. This project aims to improve safety by constructing a new dedicated flyover ramp for eastbound traffic on Route 58 to the SIPSA entrance on Bob Fuller Road, replacing the existing at-grade meeting and crossing and eliminating crossover conflicts with westbound traffic. During construction, motorists may encounter single-lane and shoulder closures, lane shifts, and intermittent full closures as needed. For more information, visit b.virginia.gov. In celebration of the 50th anniversary of the city of Suffolk, Suffolk Transit is excited to announce fare-free Saturdays through the end of the year. Residents who use or plan to use the bus are encouraged to download the ETA Spot Mobile app for bus locations and route times. For more information on Suffolk Transit, visit SuffolkTransit.org. The Public Utilities Department advises that they will be conducting smoke testing in the sanitary sewer system over the next month. All areas scheduled to be smoke-tested will be notified with door hangers that describe the upcoming smoke-testing efforts. The test will begin on August 12th and is scheduled to commence in Barrett Acres, Chatham Woods, and Turlington Road near Meadow Landing. If weather or other factors cause delay in smoke-testing, it will continue the following Suffolk Workforce Development Center is excited to announce a flurry of hiring events throughout the month of August. Hiring businesses include the Regional Maritime Workforce Center, Harbor Freight, and Military Sea Lift Command. For more information on these events and more, visit Suffolk Workforce Development Center on Facebook. And a quick reminder of the ongoing TGIF concert series, which switched venues to Bennett Creek Park. They will feature Slap Nation on August 9th, and Anthony Rosarino and the Conquerors on August 16th. Festivities begin at 6:00 PM, and the band will perform from 6:30 to 9:30. Admission is free for all ages, concessions will be available for purchase. Attendees are encouraged to bring a chair or blanket for seating. For more information on the music lineup, visit SuffolkVA.us. And the Parks and Rec Department is excited to announce that the downtown festival park is officially open. On Saturday, August 3rd, they celebrated the grand opening with 50 Fest, where members of the community signed the iconic archway beams, listened to music from the Inside-Out Band, and even got to see Councilman Rector in his polyester suit. Thank you to all the departments for helping make this event memorable. And our annual National Night Out Celebration was held last night here across the city. The send-off ceremony was held in council chambers and has had the highest level of energy I have ever seen in this room. We even had our own pom-pom section. From there, the eight public safety motorcade spanned out across the city to cover over 20 locations, and spend time with our residents and spread the national... locations and spend time with our residents and spread the National Night Out cheer. A special thanks to the Suffolk National Night Out Committee, Suffolk Police, Suffolk Fire and Rescue, Suffolk Sheriff's Office, Commonwealth Attorney's Office, Western Tidewater Regional Jail, and the Department of Probation and Parole, and of course, the communications team, and to every single city volunteer who stepped up to make this event incredible. I didn't have enough time to do a recap video of the event since it was just last night, so I'm sharing pictures with you on the screen, but I promise that at the next council meeting, I'll have a video for you to enjoy. And of course, on your screen are the various ways you can stay connected to the City of Suffolk happenings. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We'll now move on to announcements from the city council. Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, you never know from...
I know, it's always... I try to do either way.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. Nice to see everybody after a longer-than-usual break with the 5th Wednesday. But first of all, I wanted to say a special thank you to the Planning Department. I know they're doing multiple duties right now with the comprehensive plan, but I really appreciate the Village Center zoning proposal, proposed changes that were presented, and also the nightclub bar, live music. I think both of those represent really positive changes where we're looking at where we've been and where we need to be and finding ways to get there, and appreciate all of their hard efforts and look forward to approving both of those things in the future. I just want to say that National Night Out, the only one I went to was the one in Oakland Chucka Tuck, and we had great attendance, lots of new faces, good food, good fun, and neighbors visiting with neighbors. And I appreciate all the support that the city gave to that event. And a huge, huge shout-out to the Civic League who, they pull it off every year. I think every year they don't know how they're going to do it, and every year they do. So it was a great night. We had a lot of fun, and I appreciate, we had, we had a whole lot of new folks show up to volunteer last night, too. So a good time had by all, and I hope, I hope we win first place. I heard that the other events around the city were really great, too. So a wonderful night and a wonderful, wonderful celebration of our community and a lot of positive vibes. So thanks to everybody for that. And lastly, we've got a storm bearing down on us, and hopefully it's just going to be rain. I know it makes it complicated. If you're someone who works outdoors, it's hard to get field work done when, when you can't get in the field. So, but to everyone in general, stay safe, be careful with the rainfall, and the sun will come out hopefully this weekend. And with that, I'll say good night.
Councilmember Bennett?
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Just have a few comments. Just to manage a couple of things I would like to be looked into. With the speeding on White Marsh Road, there has been a lot of complaints from that area also in Hosea Road, and they're having the same concern with the North Carolina traffic for some reason, using those two avenues coming through, I guess going to the shipyard. So I'd like to, for the police to try to, it's usually during the morning hours on the way to work and in the afternoon going home. So those, I think it's between five, six o'clock and, five o'clock in the morning till about eight o'clock. Like to have somebody sort of take a look at putting the police out there every now and then, try to give them a few tickets, and I think that message will go well. But the rest of them, usually, when I was working there, if somebody got a ticket, the word got around quick. Be careful when you're going on certain roads, so. I would like for you to take a look at that as well. Also, up on, up in Bennett Creek Landing area with the concern they have there with global fiber, I hope that we will talk to them and make sure that those issues that was brought before us will be addressed as well. Also, I'd like to say that I thank all the ones that came out tonight and put your concerns before us, and we definitely does not have a deaf ear to your concerns. So don't feel like you have to stop coming. That's what, you have the public time to come. If it's every week you want to come, we are here to listen, so don't stop taking that nobody's listening, so I want you to know that. Also, I would like to give recognition to a new judge that was just appointed in Portman and one of our own, which started, was here in the city attorney's office for some years, Mr. Simon Asbury Jr. He was appointed judge there in the third jurisdiction of Portman. And I was at the investiture also, the city attorney, Mr. Williams was there, and it was a great, 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 great turnout. Probably about 30 judges were there to witness, and I just want to congratulate him and his family for great appointment, and he was excited, everyone in Portman was excited, so I'm excited for him and glad to know he got a start, not a start, well, he did work in Suffolk, I can't say he got a start here. But we trained very, very well in Suffolk, looked like to, when people move on, they always move up to a higher level. So I want to say to Judge Asbury, congratulations, and, let's see, do I have anything else on my notes here? And Police Officer Parker, I knew him very well, my condolences go out to him, to his family. And he was a police officer for about 40 years here in the city, so I want to send my condolences as well to him. But that, I'll say, thank you, good night.
Councilman Johnson?
And I'll begin by thanking the folks from the Preserve. Perseverance pays off. Mr. Blue, Dr. Rose, the Ramos family, and everyone else that's here from the community. Keep on, that's what we can do. You've got a legitimate thing going here, and you've got council's ear. And hopefully, we'll be able to work it out with the developer in your community. I'm sorry you're having to go through this, but you're doing the right thing, so keep on. Second thing on my list, Andrea Periden, thank you for coming. It's always, you always bring a good point, and we, we appreciate your opinion. You're way much smarter than I am, but we appreciate your opinion on how things should go. Third thing on my list, Jesse Epperson, Deputy Chief, congratulations. I, I feel like he's a child, but we've watched him grow up and we are so proud of him, so congratulations on your new position with the city. Jennifer, Lakeland High School, I'm just saying it from my borough, it was wonderful. You guys were really, really super. It was a tremendous crowd out there. Everywhere I heard, everyone said the same thing, "We're going to be doing this for the next 20 years. This is the right thing to do." So Tim Kubil, the vice principal out there, and the principal, and all the staff, all the policemen, all the bands, all the, it was, it was a great, great night. I think it just made National Night Out even more successful. One thing, if the rain comes like it came yesterday, we had a downpour on 58, and because of the newness of the road and the fact the water couldn't run off, we actually had, I won't call it flooding, because we don't really flood around here, it runs off so quick, but it was kind of flooding. It was like 10 inches of water on the water, and it went away pretty quick. But just beware, tomorrow, the next day, when we get all of this rain, if you're out on the major roads, go 30, go 35, go 25. Be aware that the water can build up. When it comes down, if we were truly to get the six to eight inches this year we could get, wow. So please, please be careful on your major roads, as well as your back roads. Festival Park, I was so excited to see it open. Didn't have the crowd that I'd hoped we were going to have, but it was a good crowd. And it means now we've got a festival park, guys. So hopefully, we'll be using it into the future. The other thing I wanted to say was to the Sister Cities Commission, thank you, guys, for everything you did, for everything the city did. It was a great, great occasion, and the city is very proud of you. Policeman Gary Parker, condolences to his family and to the force. He'd been with us forever. He's like a member of our family that has left us. My condolences to his family. The, two more things, and then I'm going to quit. TC Energy, we've got gas lines going in that we all should be very much aware of over right now. It's over near, over near the cemetery, Horton Cemetery, and there's a lot of roadwork, a lot of, lot of stuff before this thing. It's going to be with us till probably 25, thanks, November of 25. But we're going to have more information out for the public as we go along, and hopefully that'll be something that we can make people a little more aware of. It's been coming for a while, we knew it was coming, but it's still, it's a lot on our roads, a lot on our city. So be aware, ask questions. I've got information, we can, I know Ms. Barlow has information. If we can help you with that, we're happy to get it out to you, and hopefully, there'll be some community meetings on it. The other thing is, every time I talk now, I'm going to make one point from somebody that sent me an email, and this email is from a gentleman that lives at Cameron Crossing on 58. His name is John Ricks. And Mr. Ricks is very, very concerned about the completion of 58, which by the way, they say is going to be December 8th of this year, just a little tidbit there, hopefully that's a good thing, about getting across traffic from his community. It's going to be a tough one. So be, know that, that we as a city are going to be looking at ways to make it safe. So we haven't made decisions yet, because right now, we've just got to get the road built, but I for one, am going to be pushing to make sure we live in a safe community, and we're going to do what's right for the citizens in that community. So with that, I'll say thank you for listening, good night.
Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like to go first because, now I know what it feels like to have everything you're going to talk about already talked about.
We did that on purpose.
But anyhow, so I'm just going to echo a couple of things real quick. Number one, congratulations, Chief Bowie, to Chief, Deputy Chief Epperson's promotion. I know that's going to be a good thing for the city, and it's going to be a good thing for your department, and we should all be proud of him. I want to congratulate the city on their distinguished budget award, and then also the media department on their tele silver award. It looked like a little, little Oscar. Might even be made of gold, you might want to get that checked out. I did have an opportunity along with the mayor, Mayor, I'm going to steal a little bit of yours now. We attended the Chamber of Commerce Valor Awards for the region's first responders. And I tell you, it was very much a humbling experience to sit there and listen to the stories of the firefighters and the policemen from all over the region and listen to their stories of some of the things that they have done, throwing their personal safety and personal welfare completely out of the window to protect their fellow citizens. And Suffolk should be proud, three members from our Neighborhood Enforcement Team, Investigator Nicholas Smith, Senior Police Officer Christie Gaines, and Sergeant Jesse Lyons from the Neighborhood Enforcement Team were honored with the Investigative Merit Award, so congratulations to them, they should be very proud of that. Thank you, Councilman Williams, for the work that you did to get the grass cut over there at Oaklawn Cemetery. I know that the people that look after that, you know, run out of funds, and I thank you very much for stepping up and making that happen. National Night Out, I don't think I can say anything more than what has already been said. I missed it last year because I was out of town. After attending some of the events last night and going to the finale there at Kings Fork High School, I can promise you, it's going to be on top of my calendar list every year, and I promise that I will try to be in town to see that, because it was a great, great event. The city should be very, very, very proud. Ms. Sims, thank you very much for your presentation about the events of the Sister Cities. I was fortunate enough to be able to participate along with you guys on a lot of the events. I know that the Italians left here almost as tired as when we left Italy, how tired we were. So I, I think the city did a good job of putting it on and taking them around and getting them to see some things that we definitely knew were going to be of interest to them. So thank you for all the hard work that you guys put into that. And the festival park opening was a good event, and Mother Nature held off for a little bit. I did not die in my polyester white disco leisure suit, but I did feel like I brought back the 70s a little bit, if nothing else, in spirit. And with that, I will say good night.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. First, I would like to thank everybody that came out, and I just wanted to echo what some of the other council members said. We hear you. Continue to come out, continue to voice your opinion, continue to ask for help. That's what we're here for. Don't think for one minute that you're bothering us, because that's what you put us here for. So please continue to come out to Dr. Rose, Mr. Blue, everybody from the Preserve, the gentleman on White Marsh Road, we hear you, and we're going to work on it. I hate to just repeat everything everybody else says, but I attended the grand opening, of course, at the festival park on Saturday, August 3rd. The day started off kind of rocky because of the weather, but the rain stopped and everything went on as planned. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank city manager, assistant city managers, Gary Jones, Mark Farrow, Tara Barona and staff, Jennifer Moore, and everyone who played a part in bringing such an awesome usage of green space in our downtown area. I mean, it's wonderful, and I just see, this, this is, I mean, I hope every citizen in this city get an opportunity to go out and enjoy that festival park, because it's truly a nice area. And I was really impressed. The band was wonderful. I mean, the band was awesome. And I encourage you to go out and, please go out, take a look at what we're doing downtown, because downtown is changing. Suffolk is changing, and it's changing for the better, for the best. Also, I attended the National Night Out. Very, very, very good event. Like the mayor said, it's his favorite. I think it's beginning to be my favorite. I'd like to thank everybody who participated, all the organizers. Just, just keep it up. I'm looking forward to 2025. All right, so I hope we continue, continue what we're doing, and hope we get first place. I'm hoping that we will. Mr. Manager, if you could, could you have staff take, I got to put on my glasses now. Can you have staff take a look at 201 Kilby Avenue? The grass there is about three foot tall. I actually passed by there last night during the National Night Out. Also, 528 Okawah Avenue, the grass may be a little bit of a four feet tall there, and the hedges and shrubs are as tall as the house there. So it's, I'm, actually, I'm going to forward you some pictures, but if you can get staff to take a look at those things. Normally, I will have my word of the month, but I'm going to do it at the next meeting, and with that, I'd like to say good night.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, Chief, Deputy Chief Epperson, congratulations to him. And I believe, I think, next Friday, you have a recruit class, I mean, a recruit segment coming, so you're going to have that here. So anybody that wants to be, or even thinks they want to be a police officer, they can come out next Friday, I think it's 10:00 AM, am I correct?
It starts at 8:00.
It goes start at 8:00. And that's going to be over here at the old...
Police headquarters.
Oh, you go to Police Headquarters. So if you want to, if you want to come out and be a police officer, come on out, and they'll put you through all the necessary motions to get you started. We would like to have you. If you think that's what you'd like to do for your career, we'd love to have you. We are trying desperately to get our police force up. The chief's doing a good job. We have a number of recruits in school at this point, so that's great. We have a number of recruits, both in police also, as well as fire. So we've got a lot going on when it comes to the public safety side. So come on out, I'm going to probably see you next week and we'll check it out. I might run the course just to see if I can still do it. Anyway, Jennifer, National Night Out, you know, I mean, you guys put the work in, you start after it's over for the next year almost to get the thing run up, get the volunteers and get everything in place, and it's very rewarding to see the amount of work and effort that you folks put into it, and all the citizens. I mean, everybody that participates and goes out, takes the time to do it. You know, Creekside was a bang last night, but they had it going on. I think Creekside was good. We even had Blue Bell out there giving ice cream away. I mean, we had it happening out there. Harborview had the first one this year at Harborview, over at the riverfront. They, they got it going on, and next year will even be better for them over there. So I want to tell you that, I appreciate that, and can't ask for no more than that. For Ms. Sims, thank you again for coming, your team, Sister Cities, all of the Sister Cities participants, all the folks that came over, they went back with memories that they will never forget. Probably some of them never seen an aircraft carrier before, and just to thank. And just to thank, but the highlight too was the fountain that was developed and put over it, over at the park over here between the courthouse. That was just phenomenal. That was great. The amount of work that that gentleman did, bring that back to give to our city as a part of Sister Cities was just unbelievable. And I want to thank everybody that was involved. Gary and all your crew and everybody that was involved that put that together over there. Truitt House was successful. That's a beautiful, that's the first time I've been in that house. That place is just magnificent over there. So I want to thank them for opening their home to, to everybody. Finance, congratulations on all your awards. City manager and staff and everybody that's involved with SIPSA. I want to thank you all for getting, keeping the hard work with those folks to get that flyover out there on that fifty-eight bypass out there because it's, it's going to save a lot of lives and, and it's going to make it much easier for our equipment to get in and out, our communities to get in and out, to go into the landfill. It's, it's just one of the most dangerous crossovers right there, trying to get over and get into that landfill. It's just, there's no words for it, but this is going to fix it. It's going to take a little time to get it, but it was a hard push, but it all got together. And I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing it. Downtown Festival Park, you know, everybody that was involved in that festival park. As Mr. Williams said, it's a great place, it's a downtown. We're starting to move the needle a little bit on the downtown. We're going to new, we're going to continue to move the needle on this downtown to get it even perking even more. With that, I hope everybody gets to go out. I hope we have a lot of different events out at the festival park. Not just TGIFs, but a lot of events to try to make it a continuous place for people to want to come to. And I think it'll get used, used. And I think right behind that, we've got a new library kicking up. So things are starting to happen. Just give us a little time. We're going to have a new advisory board here shortly and that's even going to enhance us even more so to get us on the track, to help us out, to see if we can even do better. I want you to keep in mind that our public safety has been very busy the last couple of weeks, both in police and fire. We've had a tremendous amount of, of actual homes that are burnt. People got burned out of some of their homes. There's some serious damages out there. We've had a lot of crashes out there and our fire and our police officers have been very busy. My heart goes out for the thanks to each one of those that run the roads every day to protect each and every one of us out there and to help out and to make it a better and safer place. If we could only slow some people down, it would be nice. If we could get them off of the throttle a little bit, we'd probably save more lives. But everybody wants to go flying by to get that extra car length ahead of everybody. So I wish everybody would take and slow down. For the folks that came out from over, Ms. Rose, thank you for coming up and giving your comments. Dr. Rose? I, I loved going out there riding with you all. It was, it was a good morning to ride with you. I got to see what you were talking about. My only hope is that with, as the mayor has stated, this council should be engaged every moment to try to help you in every way that we have every avenue available to us to do so. I hope that we will achieve that. We'll keep looking for that to happen. So don't give up on us. Whatever you do, don't give up on us. We're going to keep at it. There's a lot of road construction right now, a lot of road construction everywhere. I think you heard Mr. Johnson say there was some road construction out there and he's had all those problems with fifty-eight and four sixty and now we've got seventeen and Shoulders Hill Road getting ready to happen. Crittenton will be coming up shortly. There's going to be a lot of road construction, so the best thing to do is just deal with it, slow down. We're going to get through it, but it's going to make it a better place for us when we're done. So if you would, think about that. I want to thank each and everybody, everybody that came out here tonight and spoke. As Mr. Williams has said, you will never, ever think that you're bothering us. We have telephones, emails, ways to catch us, find us. We're here. This council is dedicated. If you want to sit up here, you have to be dedicated every day and most of your hours of every moment of your day to help the citizens of this city. That's what you're here to sit here for and that's what each and every member up here does every day. I don't know anybody up here that does not. So I will continue to pledge to do that as long as I'm sitting on this dais. With that, Mayor, I thank you for a good evening this evening and I look forward to the next meeting. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, most of, most of them mentioned everything, but I want to commend Sister City and the city of Suffolk for working so well together. I thought that was great to see the people of Italy, but this was the first time I stayed the whole time. And each segment, it was, you know, had a good time talking with them. Some of them had translator, but it was a great, I mean, it was well worth the time and effort. And when you all put that together, it was put together real fine, the dinner, the just meet and greet. And, and what, what, and like you said, the Truitt House, I couldn't believe what I was seeing. That's a model of what can happen in that district in order for historic houses. That's a great, great, great model. I mean, I was so, I was impressed with that. And I'd like to also mention Mr. Palmer. Mr. Palmer with the Sister City, I think his wife might be co-chair. He toured me around from, from top to bottom, from the cultural arts center to the Truitt House. And I enjoyed his time and he was explaining to me some of the history. The house would be a brewer's, one of the person who owned lumber, that's what his house, the Truitt House. Oh, it went on and on. So I really enjoyed that. And one thing was so impressive was we were trying to put up the, the flag and the flag, the wind kept blowing the flag down. And I got to give kudos to the city and the staff. In two minutes, they had sandbags. I don't know how they knew what's happened or what, but it was there. I mean, it's like sandbags already, I mean, they like knew they was coming. I was so impressed. I said, wow, that's okay, man. They want to tell, how do you have that in your truck? I didn't know, but anyway, it, it, it went well. I'd also like to talk about Pewsville. My city manager, what is the status with that? I'm having a couple of plans to the emails and I wasn't too happy with one of the emails. I'll address that later.
Okay, Vice Mayor, the drainage project, we took bids on it yesterday. The low bid is, the parent low bidder is within, of course, they've got to be evaluated yet, but the parent low bidder is, is within budget. So we are hoping that we can move forward with executing the contracts and then within the next thirty, forty-five days. And then I would expect we'd be headed, if everything works out, headed to construction probably mid-fall.
I appreciate that and you know how the city feels about the flooding and this has been going on for years and, and see now that we had a bid and so on, it's a process. I mean, it's a process, can't happen. We have no magic wand, we can do it right now. We got to wait, we got to get things done. So thank you so much for enlightening me, for enlightening the community with that. Thank Mr. Blue and Dr. Rose and all the Lake Mead community. And I thank Mr. Blue and they know how I feel about community and also feel about people coming up. And some of the councilmen said that you elect us and we're here to try to make things better for the community. And I have no problem speaking out, have no problem going there. And like I said, you don't have to email, you can call me because text and let everybody see what you want to say. I think that's broadcasting with other reasons. So I think not only you for coming, but I thank the council for looking at the situation that was put in front of you all. And I think, and like you said, keep on coming, things get done, persistence. And, and like I said, y'all are one of the best people that I've seen come up with respect and professionalism. And y'all have facts and things like that and that's glad and that's good to see that there's no coming up with animosity. Y'all just want help and want us to listen, which we do. But sometimes it take a little time to really to, not understand, but it just with the situation, we've got a lot of situations going on. I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson for coming up about the situation, about the speeding. I have somewhat similar to that in my community and we're trying to work on that. They have a tendency that's going too fast and that's a, that's a bad situation. Have kids who be out in, in that community on that street. So I know what you're saying to that. Like, and also I want to share this and with the night out. I think Jennifer Moore know how I feel about her. I think Jennifer Moore does a great job. And I really feel that she cares and her whole group cares. Got the same, same attitudes, same chemistry that works. Congratulations for the awards you received. I think well deserved. And all the places like Fest, the park, oh man, we, we doing things in downtown Suffolk and all of Suffolk, but it takes time, you know, you got to have a vision. I think we doing it. Take a little time, you got people who's with it, people who's not. But Suffolk has changed, it's not the old Suffolk, it's a new Suffolk, new council. We got different ideas. I think we going places. And I want to say this, I'm not being picky, city manager, but I addressed it with you. I don't know if you all seen it, but I love Suffolk. I mean, good or bad. I looked at Wavy TV at eleven o'clock Monday. Wavy TV didn't mention Suffolk. It mentioned Virginia Beach, Portson and Newport News having the night out. I don't know what we got to do to let them know we're number one or number two in the nation. And some of them followed us. Portson came over years ago to see our night out and tried whatever. So I went for it the first night. Okay. The second night, when I was tired, real tired, I looked at Wavy again. Wavy said some of the other cities didn't have it, but Virginia Beach had it and still their name Suffolk. So I want to know what we have to do to let Wavy know that their news is not correct. Suffolk had ours, we had ours. So I don't feel that they don't know that when we were number two and we might have to tell them we number two in the nation or number one in the nation. Whereas, you know, we should get that in, in there. And I think Ms. Moore works too hard not to get that publicity. It's not bragging, but we are number one and number two and we not Virginia Beach, we Suffolk. We've been like this for the last five to 10 years, whenever we started. So I'd just like to see that is corrected in some type of way with the hard work that she does, the city does, the whole city of Suffolk, the whole staff. I just want to get a little credit with that. A little bias. Thank you so much. God bless.
All right, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. There, I'm going to try not to be redundant. There have been a lot, a lot of activities in the last couple of weeks. I want to start off by offering my, my personal condolences to the Parker family. I met Gary about forty, forty-two years ago. I don't think he'd been on the force too long and he, most of his career, I think he was working undercover. And back then, the rules were a little more lenient. So every couple of weeks they'd come by and want to know if they could borrow a different car so it wouldn't be recognized in the new neighborhood they were in. So I felt like I was contributing back then, but I, I can't remember. I think he was, was he with the forty-some years? Forty-two years. So it was just about the time that he came on and I just coincidentally happened to run into him at the Lowe's about three weeks ago. We talked for a while, but it was, whatever it was, was, was rather sudden. And I know he'll be missed by all we knew him, just a great guy, great personality and you would have never dreamed that that's what he did for a living. I can't remember what that show was, guess my something, but you used to guess what it, but anyhow. Great guy and, and we'll all miss him. This evening, I thought we got a lot done. We discussed a few things, we changed a few things, we got some ordinances being changed. That's kind of what it's about, that's how it should work. You know, we, times change, circumstances change. We need to learn by our mistakes change and as a government, that's what we need to do. I know sometimes I used to hear, how come we're not doing this? Well, that's how we've done it for 30 years. You know, we need to be able to adapt to the needs of our city as it grows and we need to adapt to, to the wants and needs of our citizens at the same time. And I think we're doing a, a very commendable job doing that and I appreciate everybody's help in that effort because that's what it takes. Takes everybody to get on the same page. We've got a lot of good things going on within the city, especially as far as our personnel is concerned. Same thing with Major Epperson. I think I first met Jesse, he hadn't been promoted to sergeant yet, but he's had a, a very distinguished career and I'm sure he'll be a great addition to the senior staff for Chief Bowie. The awards that come in for our employees, the distinguished budget presentation award, the Kelly Silver Award for our media department speak for themselves. As far as activities are concerned, I attended the East Suffolk High School reunion on the 19th. East Suffolk High School was from 39 to 65 and I think in 66, they moved to JFK. I mean, it's quite a history if you, if you look at the beginning and the ending dates, there was a whole lot going on in the world and our nation during that time period. And there's a lot of history there. I saw a lot of folks that I know there and there've been a lot of contributions made to our city and our state from graduates of East Suffolk and I wish them all the well and hope they're, they're around for a long time. I did kind of joke a little bit that very seldom do I ever get to go anywhere where I'm one of the youngest people in the room. So it was kind of unusual, but very welcome. The Valor Awards in Virginia Beach, I won't beat that up. Councilman Rector mentioned it, that our neighborhood enforcement team received an investigative award. Always a good time, Suffolk City, Sister Cities. I don't know how that event could have been any better than what it was from start to finish. I mean, it was just awesome. You know, what they did and I want to thank the manager and his staff. I spoke to some of the folks from Sister Cities who are with every night and I said, don't thank me, thank the manager. You know, he's, he didn't need any prodding, he put it together and, and he's the one that made it happen along with his staff, but it's, it starts at the top. The reception at the Truitt House, I want to thank Brian and Christie for opening up their house also. The, we had the service awards for our employees on the 25th. I just came in to do a little cameo appearance because I couldn't stay, but that's also, it's, it's just a time for us to recognize all the employees who are celebrating an anniversary with the city in five-year increments. We had two individuals that had hit 40 years, Shirley Sneed and William Pope. Pope, William Pope, Mr. Pope, William Pope. I didn't think that was an R. Mr. Pope who had over 40 years worth of service, but we have some very, very dedicated employees and a lot of employees with a lot of longevity and that speaks volumes in today's world because labor of any source is, is a short, is short supply nowadays. So if you're not taking care of your employees, then they're not going to hang around long. And that's a tribute to the management that they have, yes, sir.
But you did leave early, I made all the guarantees to you.
What?
At the employee luncheon.
I did. Oh, you take care of, you ate my lunch?
No, I made sure we told them that raises come every year from long.
Yeah, that's right. Somebody threw the manager under the bus. The 27th, I went to a little celebration, a little cookout for Nora's Safe House, which is the name of a new safe house that was named after Nora Butler, who has been with Geneva Shelter for a long time. And it's, Geneva Shelter's been around for a long time and it, and it serves in a valuable service along with some of the other organizations that we have in Suffolk. It's always, it's usually one of the hardest questions for me to answer or, or to be able to solve and it's the ever increasing need to, to address homelessness, to address food deserts, to have a safe house for folks like, you know, for battered women and that's what Geneva Shelter does. I want to thank Chris Hearn who's with Spectrum. He's very instrumental in obtaining grants from Spectrum for different organizations and where he was able to put together or advocate for and they received a $10,000 grant to go towards Geneva Shelter. So I want to thank Chris for all he did. Public Safety Committee, we met again on the 30th and I'm going to put it out every time I say. And I'm gonna put it out every time I say Public Safety Committee. If you have an issue, if you have something that you'd like for us to address as a city concerning your neighborhood related to safety, and that can be anything from a street light to a camera, to a stop sign, to a sidewalk, to demolishing a building, anything at all that can be addressed, go to the city website, right on the front page, there's a tile that says Public Safety Committee. Click on it, put the information in there. You don't, it can be 100% anonymous. You don't have to do anything except just enter your concern, where it is, what it is, and we, you guys take a look at it. Or you can be more specific and put your name and contact information if you'd like to be contacted. We're meeting every other month. Every single, every single entry on that website goes to the manager's office to review. There's a lot of them that come within the auspices of his day-to-day duties he can take care of. But if it needs to go to Public Safety Committee for some type of immediate funding, we have funding available to do that and it's available right now. So you can make your request. It gets considered, goes on the list. We'll look at it the next month. If it deems to be something that we, we want to move forward with, it gets funded and you will see a result. So please, 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 put it out to anybody, church, the civic leagues, whatever. Go to the portal, put it in there. Last time we approved about $600, $700 worth of sidewalks, $800 worth, more? More? Yeah, a bunch. So, you know, that's, it's gonna happen. Yeah, it's gonna happen. We got a lot of good things going on. We just got some new trucks that came in from last time before. I don't know if you saw one out at National Night Out. They're awesome. For the police department to use, you know, is, they can zip around through crowds. They sit up high. Norfolk uses them, a couple others, but it's just gonna be a great addition. I can't wait to get some downtown, especially in the evenings, Friday, Saturday night. What else we got? Went out to the Benning Creek Rec Center. They had a little reunion for drill instructors there. That's my old, my old reserve unit. These guys came in right after we did. A lot of Suffolk residents, I enjoyed going out there. Old school basketball tournament, they had the same, same afternoon over at Lakeland. Chris Wright put that on. I can't remember which high schools, one Suffolk and Forest Glen, maybe? Man, I don't want to put the wrong high schools out, but it's four, the old high schools, old guys playing. Big crowd though. A lot of folks love to go to that thing. Festival site and art signing. The weather held out. And I mean, we've got, we got lucky two days in a row. I mean, the man upstairs was looking for us. We got a little window to do the festival site. We got a little window to do National Night Out. And to look at the festival site, you can look at it for what it is, but you can't really appreciate it until you realize what it was and how it came about. You know, we took a disaster that fortunately no one was seriously injured or hurt. Took out some dilapidated properties. And the manager and staff had the vision to say, you know what? Maybe we could buy that property. Maybe we could make something out of it. Maybe we could create an amenity downtown that would attract others from outside the city, be a great amenity for our citizens. But the goal is to make downtown a destination. I want people to wake up in Porsham and, you know, in Porsham in the afternoon and say, what are we gonna do tonight? Well, let's go to Suffolk. Let's get something to eat. Let's go shop somewhere. And we'll get there. I think downtown is just on, on the cusp of becoming something very, 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 very special between the festival site, the library, the two buildings we purchased, the interest, the downtown advisory committee. I mean, this is more happening downtown in the last 12 months. It's probably happened in the last 15 years. You know, and it's just gonna get better. Congressman Kiggins came to the festival site, which I thought was pretty cool. And then I got a phone call and she wanted to come to National Night Out. Now, this is kind of unusual. We've got a Congress, federal congressperson that gonna come to our city on a Saturday and come to our civic, our city on a Tuesday just to kind of hang out. You know, and I spoke to her. I said, I really didn't plan on seeing you here Tuesday. She said, I love Suffolk. I love to see what you've done with it. You know, and she must have meant it, she was here. And along with her, of course, our own state Senator Emily Jordan also came. And she does an amazing job representing us. Went to Oak Grove Baptist Church yesterday. Reverend Alicia Lawrence is trying to address food insecurity. Went with the vice mayor. And also want to get with the manager and maybe Z to see how we can work with coordinating not only her, but with also, you know, with some of the other organizations that we have in town that do address food insecurity, be it the Food Bank, be it the Salvation Army, be it some of the pantries, Meals on Wheels, virtually, we have all these individual organizations. Maybe we as a city can kind of get everybody's head together in more of a concerted, united effort, which normally I've found that, you know, that if we can get the organizations together to share resources, they all have their own resources. And maybe we can help in that manner. And then National Night Out, it's already been beat up pretty good. But National Night Out is absolutely my favorite event of this, of the year. And I don't see how, it will never be anything other than my favorite event. And I actually made it to more than a couple this year. The Suffolk redevelopment housing went right past Chocatuckas. I'm gonna try Creekside and get back to Chocatuck. And I couldn't do it, so I had to call the manager, let him know I was gonna be late 'cause I gotta do Chocatuck and hit King's Fork. And as always, it was great. I mean, the staff does a great job, the manager, our first responders, media. I mean, everybody's on the same page. I don't know where we're gonna be. We're gonna be in a new category this year at over 100,000, but we're gonna be on the map. If not, I'll have a phone call for somebody, someplace, somehow. So with that being said, like I said, we got a lot going. Anybody thinks we don't have anything going on in this city ain't awake. It just ain't awake. And Gary's over there shaking his head, he knows. I mean, we're building stuff. We talked about roads, we got, anyhow, we got a lot going on and, and I couldn't be more proud. So with that being said, my quote of the night is, and it's relative to National Night Out, and I'm not exactly sure where it was from. So that quote is, "Safety thrives in a community where connections are strong and collaboration is key. Together we create a safer environment for everyone." And with that, I will ask for a motion for adjournment. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Councilman Williams?
Second it.
Any discussion of the motion? Here are none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.